I will call to order the whatever date, February 8th, when I'm board, select board meeting. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom and we should be used to this by now. As such, we will be recording it as you just saw. And we will take all of our votes by roll call and we'll start with our attendance, which we'll do by roll call as well. Gary, you want to start that?
Gary Cheeseman's here.
And I know I saw Diane. Yeah, she is.
Muted Diane.
Oh muted.
No wonder you didn't hear me talking. Diane Bucos here.
Catherine Harrison here. We have Tom Younger, our interim TA, who looks like he's N. Robuck, but he's really Tom. It's a nice reminder of the past. You're kind of a nice reminder of the past too, Tom, and the present. We have Catherine Tinsley taking our minutes. And I guess that we will just start our agenda. So the agenda tonight is almost completely, except for a few announcements, having to do with the permanent town administrator search. And hopefully we'll get through a lot of decision making tonight so that we can actually get started, particularly in the advertising, which would be the first stage of this. So we will start with public input as we do. We do have some people on the call tonight. If there's anyone who has any questions or comments that they would like to make this evening on issues that are not on the agenda, we do leave a few minutes for that at the beginning. And that looks like we'll get our packet up as well, our slideshow. And I think when it comes up, we'll start because I am not thinking that there's anyone. Oops, Tom, be anyone say anyone in the chat? I don't think so. So we'll begin. If we can have the first slide back a little bit. I think we want to start with one more. The one that says announcements. One more. Okay. And Tom, if you what we skipped past the first, I think, announcement. There we go. Tom, if you wouldn't mind taking us through the announcements, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Wyndham. Our first announcement is a reminder that you can go on wyndham.gov/covid to understand and know what our current cases, our numbers, and to sign up vaccine clinics. Every Wednesday from 3:30 to 6:30 at the Hamilton Senior Center, you may make an appointment for a COVID-19 vaccination. It's free and open to the public. Walk-ins are welcome. IDs and insurance cards are not required, but will be accepted if available. So you may contact our Board of Health at 978-626-5243. Oh, it's Hamilton's. I'm sorry. You can contact Hamilton too, but we'd rather have you contact Wyndham's at 978-468-5520, extension four. One thing on this, I'm going to be trying to follow up, which I used to do with the board before I, when I was here for my first tenure, is generally on Thursdays, the state master department of public health puts out the numbers for the past two weeks. And I will be probably sending the one-page report of the region of how we're doing. The numbers that will be coming out will be from a week ago, but it will be for like the two-week count. The numbers have been going down, but two weeks ago, the numbers were still high in the region, but they should be dropping. And I should have some exact numbers for you by the end of the week, the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, local election information. Just a reminder that our annual town meeting will be held on Saturday, April 2nd at 1:00 PM. Our annual town election is Thursday, April 7th, all day, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Wyndham Town Hall downstairs in the first floor conference room. Nomination papers for all the various positions that we have on the election ballot are open right now and it's available beginning earlier in January, but there's still openings for you to submit your papers. The last day to register to vote here is March 11th. And that's the date applying to both our annual town meeting and your town election. It's be great if you could vote for both of those. The annual town meeting is an open town meeting. It all eligible voters are allowed, can attend. Town Clerk's office on March 11th, the last day, will be open until 8:00 PM. Or you can register online if you do not want to go out in the rain, snow, or ice, or whatever it will be that last day at www-registertovoteMA.com. The open seats that we have on various boards and committees that are elected, our select board, we have a one seat for a three-year term. The Board of Assessors, Board of Health, and the Hamilton Wyndham Library Board of Trustees each have one seat for a three-year term. The Board of Trustees on the library is the Wyndham seat. On the regional school committee, there are three at-large seats for a three-year term. The planning board has one seat for a five-year term. That's a full five-year commitment. The water commissioner, it's a one seat for a three-year term. And finally, our housing authority, one seat for a five-year term also. Next, for those who are parking in the streets right now, you really shouldn't be because there's a winter parking ban on for our town, which has been in effect since November 15th. That was before I came back through March 31st. No vehicles may be parked on town streets from midnight to 6:00 AM between those dates. Please do not park on there and give our public works department and our police department, you know, some help during these snow times.
Okay, reports. And Tom, you're up first. So if you'd like to continue on with your report, that would be great.
Great, thank you. Not as much this week because it's been only seven days since our last meeting. But a few updates. One thing is legislation on House 4345, which most towns are aware of, which was named the COVID bill. But what it did allow, and it's on the governor's desk at this point, is some changes for town meeting and for public meetings. One, it would extend through July 15th. The recording options or the remote options for public meetings. It was set to expire on April 1st. It's been extended through July 15th. The second one is a little more complicated and it's up for decisions if any board, select board wishes to do it. It allows the option for, because of COVID, for the board after a public hearing to lower the quorum count in a community for your open town meeting. I believe our count here, our quorum is 120. And you can lower it as low, and I would never recommend this, 10%, which would mean that 12 people would be able to count as a quorum for Wyndham, which for all intents and purposes is probably the finance committee, the select board, the moderator, and whatever else board, town clerk, shows up at that meeting. But that's just an issue out there, which the governor will probably be signing in the bill this week. So I just want to let the board be aware of that also. Next, while we're speaking about annual town meeting, and thank you to our town clerk. Today, no petition articles have been filed. So I'm just keeping the board updated. If any do get filed, I will still notify you, but just to keep you updated there. Next, I was in contact today with our library in the Wyndham Museum. Because Mass Humanities had four grant opportunities out there today for various type programs that you could consider the museum or the library for utilizing, such as reading programs, some history programs and so forth. So I notified both Ms. Butler and Ms. Noon over at the Wyndham Museum about their opportunities. And if they would like any assistance in applying for them, I'd be more than happy to help them. As I tell all our boards and committees out there, there is money out there. And it's very advantageous for Wyndham to be a part of that. So if you see anything out there, or if I see anything, I'll notify the boards and committees during my tenure here. And last, I do want to thank the Wyndham Board. Last week, they did sign the regionalized public health grant for two individuals with Hamilton, Rockport, and I think it was, may have been Essex.
Essex.
Essex. You were the first. You're trailblazers. And now we had a meeting on out this morning and we're getting the other select board members, other towns to do that. So I just want to thank you for Wyndham and thank you for the other three towns for getting this started and we're looking forward to seeing the additional help for our board communities. And that's it for this evening.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I just have one thing, one note for the chair's report. I just want to mention that there is a board of health meeting this week. Thursday at 5:00, I believe. They, their, their, our mask mandate, I believe, is through March. And I think they're going to talk about a few things relative to masks. And also, I asked them if they would opine yet again on town meeting in case they think anything has changed that would change their recommendation that we have an outdoor town meeting. I think that we have options, but this is, this would be our final, you know, recommendation if there are any changes. So just wanted to let you know that that information should be available by the time we meet again, which will be next week on Tuesday. But that's all I have for the chair's report. Gary or Diane, do you have anything for select board?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Okay. So we have no consent agenda tonight. And before we start talking about the permanent TA search, I want to be sure to thank Tom. He has not only volunteered to help us a great deal with the search, since we don't have a consultant, but he has pretty much written all the documents that we're going to, or quasi documents that we're going to see tonight and discuss tonight. So thank you so much, Tom, for your help and your expertise in, in keeping this going.
Thank you.
So let's see. The first, the first one, the first issue in all businesses to discuss, to discuss and hopefully vote to approve the posting of the advertisement. And I think we have on the next page, we should have a copy of the ad. Hopefully everyone has read it. I don't know, Tom, if you would like to make any introductory statements on that.
Thank you. The advertisement is basically a general advertisement for a community of our size. We made a couple minor changes from the one that we put out, basically updating our budget. Being a little more specific on bond rating, because it was working just AAA bond rating, but most people who are applying are going to say, is it Moody's or Standard and Poor's? So I put S&amp;P on there. The standards are generally show a bachelor's degree, masters preferred. Because for the most case, you don't get a bachelor's in public administration. It's more of a master's in public administration. And it's just generally the same, pretty much similar to what we did before. I do think it was an interesting, I wanted to add to it. One of the items which I think we should really look at is getting somebody in here who has an understanding of the regional school districts and regionalization municipal operations, since we have a great deal of that with Hamilton and also with the other communities in the area.
Questions or comments on the ad? From Gary or Diane?
Looks good to me. The thanks to Tom for writing it. I just questioned is the the salary base range too narrow? Given that we might be able to look at a wider range of people? That kind of really doesn't lock us in, but is that too tight, you know?
You can, I mean, you can expand, you can change the ranges up to the board. You could go like from 125 to 140 if you wanted to bring it down. Generally, what would happen is anybody who's in this business, even if you don't put it in, in the ad, will go online, look at your budget and see what you were paying Mr. Farawa beforehand. But you could go 125 to 140 based on what you budgeted in there. Also, I know some of the board members, because we can't discuss this because we're three members and when you send me emails, it can't be discussed, have sent some other comments about the advertisement. So I'd be more than happy to, you know, discuss those because you can't discuss it amongst the board. And unless you're at a meeting, but yes, Gary, we could bring that down. You could also go to be determined, but generally for the most part, they'd like to see a range in there. But it doesn't mean that you're locked into the low or the high.
Right. Thank you. Looks good.
So I had a few comments.
Okay, go ahead, Diane.
I had a few comments, three to be exact, just in the wording, because I'm a little particular. I don't know why we can't say candidates should have, ideal candidate should have a master's degree, bachelor's may be acceptable. So in other words, just not candidates should have a bachelor's degree, masters preferred, but I thought ideal candidates should have a master's degree, and in parentheses, bachelor's is maybe acceptable.
Okay.
It's just picking.
Madam Chairman, if I can?
Oh, please, please.
If you're attracting currently who are assistant town administrators, are those who are maybe town accountants or treasure collectors or somebody with that municipal experience? Their prop, there's a reasonable chance they may not have a master's. I mean, you, we can put it there that masters should have a master's degree, but a bachelor's degree in a related field could be acceptable, but that narrow, that narrows the field a little more. If that's going to be a qual, that's going to be a qualification.
Okay, I'm going to go through my other two and then let you guys, let the rest of the board bounce. And the other wording that was wordy to me was strong municipal financial knowledge. Blah, 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 blah. Financial is part of it. So it should be just in my mind, a strong municipal knowledge. It's just too many adjectives in my strong municipal knowledge and understanding of regional school districts, et cetera. So that would be my second request that we take that out. And my last thing is why do you need experience working in a community with a college?
Okay, that was me. Okay, I put that in there. Having worked in two communities before here with a university and college. Though, though, to be honest with you, those two colleges, I actually had more interaction with than Gordon did because of location in the community and its impact on the community. I just put that in there as, as a bonus. Doesn't need to be in there. It's always kind of like, maybe like a tiebreaker, or if you're looking for some reason, but yeah, my impact, my, my work with Gordon, since I've been here twice, has been pretty minimal. And also the fact that Gordon is on right off of 128 and not as much in the center of the community as I was working with two other colleges. I mean, that, that can, that can be removed if the board wants to.
So those are just my comments. Otherwise, I think it's awesome that you pulled it all together for us. I really appreciate it, starting with the draft.
Gary, do you have responses or to Diane's comments?
Either way, I think the important thing is to get it out on the street here. So want to change those things, fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can change the range down to 125 to 140. Because that still puts you in the ballpark.
Okay. I only had one, I guess, opinion on that. I think using, I realize that I do agree there are a lot of adjectives in that sentence, but I think having financial knowledge is different than having municipal knowledge and having knowledge of municipal finance is a thing, like it's a, a, a different thing. So I'm not sure how. So how would you?
You just said it. You just said it. Knowledge of municipal finance. Instead of strong music. So it, it just sounds better. I like that.
Okay, so you're, just so that we all know what you're suggesting. Knowledge of municipal finance, comma. Is that what you're saying?
I think so. And then it keeps.
Yes.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with, with the other comments. I'm fine with widening the range. I wouldn't want it to go any higher, but I'm fine with widening it. So I think, so we changed that one, one sentence. Did we? And what was the, were we going to take college out?
Take college out, that's fine.
And then your, your thoughts on the degree, masters or bachelor's?
You know, I would love to say that we would require, and we have in the past, required or, you know, should have a master's degree, bachelor's plus, you know, years of experience would be acceptable. But I, I'm not sure what we're going to get for a pool here. And I, I guess in the ad, so when we get to the candidate statement, the ideal candidate, I feel more strongly about that statement. But as far as just getting, you know, reasonably qualified candidates, I'm, I'm okay with, with leaving it. You know, from anywhere, from a bachelor's to a, to a masters. It might say, I might say a bachelor's degree or relate, oh, no, we do progressive, five years of progressive. So I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I guess that would widen it. So it's allowing a wider net is what you.
Right, right.
Okay.
So should that be? What are we agreed on? Is it if candidate should have a master's degree in public administration or a related field, bachelor's degree? Now, how do you want, how do you want?
I think we're, I'm saying we can leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Fine.
But there was something in the chat.
Yeah, something, yeah, something about a AAA S&amp;P bond rating.
There's some.
And a missing comma.
Yeah, well, my select board has an open town meeting form, open town meeting for for, form of government, comma.
Form of government.
Yeah. And a AAA S&amp;P bond rating, comma, and an FY22 budget. It commas are interesting. There are some boards that put commas everywhere and others that don't. There's whole books about commas. Yeah, yeah.
If you look, my resident, I have a degree in journalism and I remember the old school when you put the commas in where you don't.
Yeah, and they're different. Watch a planning board meeting sometime, but they're reviewing minutes. They could spend, I think it's planning board, they could spend hours on commas.
I'm sorry. The question I have on the salary, are we keeping it at 135 or are we dropping it down, just having widened the range?
Well, it sounds like the folks wanted a wider range.
Okay.
125 to 140.
Okay.
And there was another quick typo. Wyndham's local government is.
Is, right.
Yeah.
Missing the is led by.
This is spell check. That's the problem sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So are we good enough with that, that we're ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
We will also be adding to that with Michelle. We'll be, Michelle's setting up the email account.
Oh, okay.
To have them go to.
Right. Right. So this is going to say, you know, electronic application should be submitted to with an email address. Yeah, we actually need that in a couple of other places as well. And I think too, just to sort of finish up this discussion, this will obviously, I think, be advertised on the MMA site. But I, I mentioned to Tom recently that I've been hearing that and seeing more municipal ads on electronic search sites like Indeed. So I think that that might be something worth looking at. If there are other municipal jobs on Indeed, again, we, we want to get this out. I think if we have colleagues or friends or other people that are in this field, I think it's fair to share this advertisement and do a little bit of our own. You know, spreading the word. Okay, so a motion, I guess, and it's on the page before. If you want to go back, there we go. Thank you.
Move that the Wyndham Select Board approved the posting for the permanent town administrator with a salary to be determined as a member of the meeting.
Right. Which? Okay. And just to be clear, we said one 25, 125 to 140?
Yes.
On salary? Okay. I didn't write it down, so that's always a bad thing. Okay, so we have let me just write that down. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So Tom, this should hopefully be able to be posted tomorrow?
We will be working on getting that out there tomorrow.
Okay, great. In keeping with the schedule. That work desperately. Okay. The next is a discussion of an ideal candidate profile. I can there's one change that there's going to be made in the draft. I'll say it in the motion. I'll say now because I'll forget later. This candidate profile actually has a date on it, so we can refer to it. So it's the candidate profile dated February 3rd. And again, I think that we'll ask Tom to speak to this one if you, so let me just make an introduction. Let me just say something. So this is what we're going, assume, whatever we agree on here in general, is what we're going to be comparing our candidates to. The, not only the candidates, but the additional app, the first, you know, the applications. The screening committee will look at this. So this is the document that kind of, with the job description, kind of defines what we're really looking for in our next town administrator. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to
Thank you.
flesh out some of the details.
And I do appreciate the board from coming up and thinking that we should put together a profile. Because it's very important when you come to Wyndham. Wyndham is a wonderful community. I didn't think so. I wouldn't be back here twice. And it has some excellent attributes. The one thing as a manager, when you're coming in, is what your expectation is of the community. This generally is not a community that you're going to be putting a 12-screen multiplex in down on the main street. So when the candidate comes in here, you've got to understand that you're basically a hands-on administrator, hands-on manager. You're doing multiple tasks. And your staffing is small. There's nothing wrong with that, but your staffing is small. And so you're going to have to be doing that. And I want the, anyone who comes in here to have that expectation. Some communities, I manage the community, a couple of communities of 25,000 to 28,000, where the select board's office, my office, had a staff of six. And that's not including human resources. This is right now, Michelle and myself. And we get a lot done, but you have to understand, you have to cooperate. You've got to work well with your department heads. Because a lot of your department heads do not have huge staffs. So everybody is taking a lot of responsibility. So that's what basically, part of the candidate profile is saying is that this is what we're expecting. We're expecting someone who is cooperative, who can work with the public, be part of the face of the community. And working with the elected and appointed officials, such a way. You're not going to be just sitting behind the screen here and just marching off order to see and do this and do that. You're doing a lot of this yourself. So it's basically having the candidates understand what the expectations are and what the candidate, what kind of candidate the select board is looking for that's in the best interest of this town.
So I think we actually have the profile on the next slide. We have it in our packet, so everyone on the board has seen it, but as we discuss it.
Can you not see it?
No, we're just seeing discussion and approval.
I don't know why.
Uh, but I hate when that happens.
I don't want to forget.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. The voice of the town of Wenham.
Can you see it now?
No.
Oh geez, all right, hold on one second.
Um, in, while she's doing that, um, as I said, we have it, I'd like everybody to see it too. But while she's bringing it up, do we have comments that we can begin to discuss so that we're not just um, waiting? Gary, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss on the candidate profile or ideal candidate? I mean, you know?
No, I think uh, it covers uh, the characteristics very well. And I think that
There it is.
It will provide good guidance to the uh, screening committee as well.
Okay. And that's what it's intended to do, actually, mostly. Um, Diane, comments?
No, I don't have any. I I think it was a very great write-up. Um, I don't know if we want to just read it for for everybody, because they won't be able to read, read it. Um, but it doesn't really say much how the the town administrator works with the board. Is that something that we want to put in here or just surprise them when we get them?
Do you know what? I don't, this is a good question for Tom, but I I don't think a town administrator coming into Wenham will be at all surprised at the tasks or, I mean, the, in general, the the kind of job that they have. I don't think there will be surprises, except perhaps, oh, gosh, I have no staff. And I I have to do everything myself. Or, wow, I thought I was coming to this sleepy little town, and it really isn't so sleepy. Um, so anyway, as far as um, I'll let Tom opine on that a little bit more. As a TA who's been in many different communities, do you think we need to put anything more in this about what to expect?
No, I could, a good candidate will um, do their homework uh, before they, before they come here. Uh, they'll go on and they should read your town reports. Uh, they'll look at your town warrants. They will go through your minutes. I mean, I did all that before I even took the acting, the interim interim role the first time. And that's what they generally do. So they know that. But the key is getting, having someone come here who wants to come here. Because then if someone who wants to come here, then they'll put their dedication into the community and they'll become a part of the community. They may not be moving here, but they attend the events, they become, as we said in the first uh, paragraph, being part of the towns, the face of the town. And that's, that's very important for a small community uh, to do that. I mean, particularly right now, like I I've worked with the one at museum. I mean, they're not a town department, but they're part of our community. And that's, I think anybody coming in will do their research and understand that.
So Diane, to your point, I I agree that people, we can read this, I certainly don't have any objection, but it occurs to me that we should probably start, um, if, uh, a TA search page, uh, you know, a link on the website to a page that has information about the town administrator's search. And uh, all of this information, including this after it's no longer draft, um, would would be there so people can access it and read it. Not only candidates, but the public.
Great idea, because they, they can also share it. If residents are interested in there, they keep up on it. Maybe they know somebody who knows somebody. You just don't know. So that's a great idea.
All right. So that's, that'll be a request, that'll be a more formal request for Tom and Michelle uh, tomorrow. But do we are someone want to read this?
Only if you want it read.
Uh, it's not up to me. If we, go ahead, Gary, you've got the, you've got a reading voice. Would you like to read that?
You want the entire thing read into?
Oh, well, no, wait, on second, well, on second thought, I think people, well, yes, go ahead. I think people can now see it on the screen, but um, for anyone who's interested, we might as well read it. It's the longest thing we have.
All right, first paragraph then. The successful candidate for the Wenham Town Administrator position must have a proven record of maintaining and or establishing positive internal as well as external relationships while holding their self and others to the highest standards of integrity and accountability. As the towns face and that of the select board, they must have a strong background and demonstrated commitment to the highest standards of public administration, thereby maintaining a high level of credibility and trust throughout the organization of the town. Good introduction, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, those, overall, we need someone that uh, fits that key profile. Onward, they need to listen and provide the highest level of customer service. It is imperative that they can organize and manage a team within collegial working atmosphere. The candidate should have a strong public ethic, integrity and accountability. Being able to manage various sized projects as well as being a consensus builder and can solve problems, challenges is important. The town administrator fills a vital role within the community and therefore must quickly assimilate into a broad and complex social structure that includes families, senior citizens, local and state government agencies, and regional service delivery partners. Wenham has an engaged public with high expectations for quality and responsive services. The town administrator is expected to lead, direct, mentor, and motivate a professional team that consistently delivers those exemplary core community services in coordination with the select board. The administrator must seek to identify and understand the community's vision for its future and provide professional, technical, and management support to elected and appointed officials in their efforts to efficiently and effectively provide for the collective needs of the community. The ideal candidate must be able to anticipate and recognize potential problems and then work with staff and other officials in a collaborative manner to develop solutions. Yeah, scroll up a little bit, all right. Given the limited number of specialized town staff positions, the successful candidate must have general experience in all facets of municipal management. They need to be hands-on and not a micromanager. Experience in municipal finance, procurement, human resources, land use, and long-range capital and strategic planning are essential. In addition, the administrator should be experienced in collaborating with other regional, municipal, and private entities to provide quality services in the most efficient manner possible. Finally, the ideal candidate must possess outstanding verbal and written communication skills, be forward-thinking, fair-minded, and transparent. It is imperative that the town administrator be able to communicate effectively with town leaders, staff, and the public. It is the town administrator's responsibility to keep the public informed, so he or she must be committed to operational transparency and exploring creative ways to promote community engagement. Customer service is a high priority for this community, which means the successful candidate must place great value on listening and providing ready access to hear the concerns of individual members of the community. The end.
That's a great story. That's perfect.
Yeah, it's pretty comprehensive. I I specifically actually like the um, emphasis on collaboration and problem solving and um, also I think it gives a little bit more detail into what skills and qualifications the person um, coming should have. So again, I I think it's important that we know, note that it's an ideal candidate, and we're not likely, well, we might, but we may not get um, a finalist that has all of these qualities, but this is what people should be looking for. So anything else on that? If not, um, we could take a motion. And it's on the screen before this one. There we go.
Move that the Wenham Select Board approved the ideal candidate profile dated three February to be used in the town administrative search process.
We're gonna amend that to February eighth, not the third, right?
No, it actually was amended, right. The the document is actually dated the third.
It is, I'm sorry. You're right.
It's unusual.
Second.
Um, okay. If there are no last comments, we'll go ahead to a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Great. So we have unanimous um, ideal candidate profile. The next one, I take a little bit more of a discussion. Um, but it is a discussion um, and a vote, hopefully, not on members of the screening committee, but on the number and the composition. Um, and I'll I'll take this for a second if I may. Um, so we talked about, we've talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, and we talked about actually a a seven, the reason the draft motion says seven is because that's what we've talked about, not that we have to have that. Um, so the um, the screening committee has, you know, an important job in looking at all of the um, or most of the applications and then um, providing three fi- three, four finalists to the select board. And again, um, the composition uh, of, you know, who who's on the, on the screening committee in the past, at least the past three searches that I've been involved in, the committee has been comprised, I believe, completely of community members. Um, it did, oh, because, well, I'll tell you why, but I did a little bit of research and not mandating or saying just for discussion. So different towns have different uh, compositions. Um, and they really vary. Some, some towns, there's one in uh, Western Massachusetts that literally has no community, well, has mostly um, town employees on the, on their committee, and others that have no uh, no town employees and others that have a mixture. Um, I I'm interested in the this this discussion, but I guess I'll throw out there that I feel that something that we've not done as well as we could in the past, and that might not, might have helped us, is to have a little bit more input earlier from our staff. Um, so I understand that having staff on a screening committee, you know, I understand the issues with it, but I wonder if it's something we could just talk about. I think we're talking about if we ha- if we decide to go with seven members, we're talking about, you know, one or two. Um, that might be staff members who might represent um, in terms of the candidate pool, represent what the staff, um, what's important to the staff. So having that, saying that, I'll I'll throw it out to Gary and Diane to see if you have any thoughts about that.
Diane?
Diane?
So I never know who's gonna go first, so I'm sorry.
I know.
I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I do think we should involve staff. Um, some sort of mix, three to four or something like that, I think is a good idea, residents and um, staff. And I also liked um, trying to pull in some new new people instead of repetitive people on the sc- screening committee. Wrong word.
Gary, thoughts?
Yes, I think the uh, the question is do we take volunteers out of the staff or are we thinking a particular, you know, department head level folks, a volunteer from that level? But certainly, you know, the uh, school committee, when they go for superintendents, it's uh, quite a mix of uh, you know, employees, community leaders, and officials. So uh, yeah, certainly we can include uh, our uh, staff in here as well. It's the question of how do we pick them out of the staff?
Well, uh, volunteers would be nice, but Gary, do you have a a thought about whether we should think about department heads or um, leave it up to you know, who who comes forward? Um, to a certain degree, I think that some of the department heads, because of the departments that they um, run, have maybe a a broader view of the town. Um, but I don't know, what? What do you think?
Yeah, I'm I'm just saying that uh, just as I would want it in the community volunteers, I think in the employee volunteers also should have people that have at least a a certain amount of tenure and also um, you know, perhaps a experience on the managerial level of department heads.
Uh, I agree with that. Um, and I do agree also with um, Diane that I think anything more, so we need to have a majority of non-staff, I think. So I'm comfortable with, you know, four community members, board members, you know, volunteers, and three staff members, if that, just to start off to get that conversation going. Does that seem like a reasonable split?
I think so.
Okay. Um, and I agree that a level of tenure, I think probably department heads is is the way to go. I hope that later in the process and uh, may, I may not be involved in it, but I I hope that as we get to our final stage, um, we can figure out a way to have a sort of broader um, input from the staff. And it's not to say that we're not interested in the community. I think we know a lot about what the community uh, would like to see in a town administrator, and we've done a lot of asking. Uh, but I think we don't always ask the staff in in these, or we don't give them much, um, you know, o- o- opinion. So um, four residents, three staff? Does that sound right? And at the, at the department head level. I don't think everybody that's at a department head level has a department head title, but with the staff that we have in uh, in town right now, I think that will be pretty obvious.
So as far as choosing these people, we would, we're going to solicit um, volunteers and ideally get more than we need.
Right. Right.
And have to somehow cut from there at some point.
Right.
Right.
And we do have um, a, a date that we would be selecting these people. I'm just looking through the
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we'd be, we'd be appointing on March first. So um, so this, this, once we finalize this tonight, I think applications or letters of interest, we don't really call them applications, um, are open and, you know, should be sent to um, to, hmm, should be sent to the town administrator. Um, and those, those letters of interest will be open until, I'm going to suggest that they stay open until um, their due March first, like the few days before that.
Right.
Yeah, perhaps we can make it the uh,
I was trying to look at my.
The Tuesday, what, uh?
Twenty-second?
Yeah, twenty-second, so that the the board has a week to look at the uh, applications.
Yeah.
So we'll do the actual vote on the first, would see the applications compiled on the twenty-second.
Yeah. Um, because I I I know for myself, I agree, Gary. I think, not only do we want to look at them, but oftentimes there are people who have put in a letter of application or a letter of interest that I don't know. Um, so I'm always interested in, you know, giving someone a call or talking to them. So I think what we have here, what um, is a seven, what we're talking about is a seven-member screening committee made up of four residents, which those residents are any residents. So if if it's a person who happens to be on a board or a committee, they're still, that's what I would, I would still call those the resident category. And three staff members of a depart- of, at the department head level. That, what we're, does that sound right?
Give it a try, yes.
Okay. And I think you can fill in a blank on the motion then. Um, Gary, when you get, we get there.
Uh.
It's made up of TBD. Sorry.
Are we ready for the motion then?
Yes.
All right. Move that the Wenham Select Board approved the appointment of a seven-member town administrator's screening committee made up of three town employees and four community citizens.
Right.
Second.
Okay, um, Diane, a vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Um, and again.
Gonna, on the date, so close a business Tuesday, the twenty-second for volunteers?
Yep.
Yep.
Cut down.
And plan to vote on the the first.
On the first, correct. Um, and again, these are now open, um, and they could be sent to, um, shall we say townadministrator@wenma.gov?
Right.
Is that the best way to do that? Okay.
We'll set that up tomorrow.
Okay, great. We've actually gotten a few, I I've seen come, I think we've all seen a few um, requests that have come through, so and Tom was copied on all of them, so he'll he'll capture all. Okay, what do we have next here?
We have the charge.
Oh, the charge. Okay, so um, so if I may. so if I may speak to the charge, only because this is one that I can't say authored completely, compiled, but it's something that we've, you know, we've seen before, before, and this is, again, what, what the expectation for the, for the screening committee. It starts with a, you know, very sort of obvious mission, responsible for choosing three to five individuals. We should, you know, as we get to the discussion, opine on whether we have an opinion there. We don't have to have an opinion yet. Who shall be considered finalists? And they will use their best judgment and understanding of the criteria for selection of the town administrator as outlined in the ideal candidate profile. We just voted, I guess I'm glad it turned out in this order. Committee will consist of seven voting members who will serve from the date of appointment until April thirtieth, unless the term is extended. Again, that's, hopefully, that will be enough time to do the job. And because people who are wanting to volunteer are sometimes interested to know what kind of a time commitment, I believe that this is, is true. There are about three meetings to review applications. And then a meeting, at least a meeting to interview candidates. So two meetings to review applications, a meeting-ish to choose semifinalists, and then a full day to to actually interview them. I did add to this because it's a very important, especially since we're not going to have a consultant that the committee understands or gets a little training on what a governmental body is and the open meeting law, particularly as it pertains to executive sessions. So this again would hopefully go up on the website at the same time as the request for letters of interest. So Tom, do you have anything that you would want to add to this or change or comment on?
No, I think that's put it together, I think it's fine. Generally, screening committees are generally between five and nine members. Seven's a good number. The three to five finalists, when you had chose the last town administration, you had three finalists. Five is a little more work for the board, but it's good to have that because if one withdraws, you still will have, you know, four candidates versus having one candidate withdrawer and then you add someone else and they know they were the runner-up. So it's better to have the five candidates and if one drops out, you have four. So if the board doesn't mind putting in a little extra work in interviewing the five candidates, that's, that works to your advantage.
Diane, comments?
I agree with that last comment from Tom. I like, I would, I would put in the mission actually for choosing four to five.
Four to five.
Yeah, if you have three, someone's inevitably gonna maybe drop for whatever reason, and then you're just down to two.
Sure. Right. That's a good idea. Gary, thoughts?
I was thinking we should put the agenda schedule in there too, you know, wording that says as close as possible, adhere to this task list, you know? Want to keep the committee charge on the timeline here.
Yeah, so I actually penciled that in, but I didn't include it in the statement. It may not be about, yeah, it's a good thought. I think in looking at the schedule, which is on the next page, I think the time, the, this group will begin sort of in mid-March, early March, and will work to the middle of April. At least looking at this schedule.
I'm just thinking if we put it as part of the charge, it gives the committee a clearer task and also for people that are volunteering, well, they can check their schedules ahead of time so they know just, you know, what it involves.
Sure. Should we put that in the time commitment section of the charge?
I can include that, yes.
Okay, so the expectation is the work will be done mid-March to mid-April.
Madam Chair, the schedule was based on basically the most expeditious, you know, to get someone in here. You know, it may get stretched out another week or two, depending upon how many candidates actually apply. You know, if you have a lot to go through or if you have a smaller group. But that, this is basically when we say the select board would choose a town administrator the last week of April, that's if everything goes according to the Hoyle here, if everything works right. It could be mid-May that occurs, but I will work with the board to try to keep the search committee working along the schedule to be going forward. And then the key is also, as we put at the end, depending upon who the boards chooses. If the board chooses a, someone who is currently a town administrator or manager, their contract probably requires them a one-month to two-month notice. If you're choosing an assistant town administrator or a finance director, it may be as soon as two weeks.
So maybe, just to the under the time commitment. It's anticipated, well, we say it's anticipated. So if we anticipate mid-March to mid-April, it might not be to your point, Tom. It might be a little later than that. It might not take that long, but we'll try to keep.
You also had said, Catherine, you had also said that we were gonna push back the week of April fourth.
Oh, yeah.
So we were already gonna push it back, so maybe we want to change the date, appointment date till May, I don't know, fifteenth or something, give an extra week in there.
Sure.
I mean, and then keeping our fingers crossed that everything works out, that sounds great.
So we'll be moving up everything from the April fourth deadline time, moving it up at least one to two weeks.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Guess I'm here two more weeks.
Well, it also means though, that if we're going to do that, which, you know, certainly makes sense, that maybe under the charge that we're, that we've been talking about, we, right now, we have the date of the appointment until April thirtieth, unless the term is extended prior to that, should we be safe and have it say serve from the date of appointment until May thirtieth?
Yeah, I can do that.
That sound okay, Gary and Diane?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, I think we've done this a couple of ways, but I actually think putting a date and then extending it is a good thing because otherwise sometimes we forget to disband committees. And so, like, you know, ten years from now, there'll be a screening committee that doesn't have an end date, so this one does have an end date unless we extend it. And it'll be May thirtieth. Okay, anything else on the charge? We've got four to five people extending the appointment until May thirtieth, and then the time commitment, I guess mid-March to mid-April, end of March to end of April? I don't know what to, what to call it now. We've added two weeks to it. It's probably mid-March to
I think it's early March, early March, right, early March.
Yeah. So that's, so you're assuming, okay, so you're assuming that we're extending just the end?
Right.
Just starting with the finalist selection is being extended. Okay. Okay, I think if, realistically, we may appoint the committee at the beginning of March, on March first, but depending on what has come in for applications, the initial screening to get, you know, I want to say weed out to, to get the number down to the, what we want to give to the screening committee might take a little time. So I don't think, just because we've appointed them on March first, I don't think they'll start March first. I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I think mid-March to start. Yeah, it's probably fair.
Okay.
Okay. I think we have, I think we have a motion a couple of pages back, if we're ready for that.
Move that the One of Select Board approved the charge for the town administrator's search screening committee as presented and amended.
Second.
Okay, ready for a vote? Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes. So, good discussion. I'm, I'm really impressed. There's a lot of work to be done, but we've done a lot of work, at least in preparation. So I think this is, so far, going, going well. We get some really great applicants. I think, other than the schedule, which we've looked at, there, where we have a discussion of other general TA search items as needed, I have written on here. We did vote, didn't we? Yes. So if there's anything else that Gary or Diane or Tom, if there's anything else relative to the screening committee that we want to talk about or put on an agenda for next time, if you could think of anything now, if not, you know, just because we've got all this, doesn't mean we can't put it on another agenda if we think of something.
No, I think that's prime, Madam Chair, I think the scheduling may have to be flexible based on the flow of the number of candidates we receive, number of qualified candidates. We would have to take that from there.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, I only have one other issue and it's for another agenda. Probably the next agenda occurred to us that we have set a date for the town meeting, but we really need an alternate date. We've had this happen once or twice before. If we're, if we're outdoors, it could be weather-related. If we're indoors, it could be something as simple as losing a quorum or not getting a quorum. So I know that Tom has had this discussion with our moderator and that our moderator is available on April ninth, so I'll just throw that out there as something to think about. We need to vote, which is the Saturday after the town meeting, originally, the original date. So I'll just throw that out there as a, something to think about, and we will put it on an agenda to probably vote at our next meeting so that we'll have you know, along exactly when we need to have things up ready. We have two upcoming meetings. We have a select board meeting, as we like to do these every week. We have a select board meeting next week, February fifteenth. Don't have the agenda yet. I'm kind of hoping that it'll have at least a couple of warrants on it, since the warrants at the moment close on the twenty-second. And also, we need to have this joint FinCom and Select Board meeting. I know that the last time, at our last meeting, we talked about doing this on the February fifteenth, along with our Select Board meeting. I'm gonna ask that we be a little flexible on this. The FinCom has an important meeting tomorrow night where they have an expectation of getting a lot of information and getting a lot done, and the, how complete or how much they get done sort of drives when we should meet. We may need to give them another day, so it's possible that we're going, it would be best to meet on the sixteenth, the fifteenth and the sixteenth. The fifteenth as a select board and the sixteenth as a joint FinCom and Select Board meeting. Does anyone have a significant problem with that? Should? We won't know. Tomorrow night, I think we'll know after tomorrow night, whether, and they'll help us, they'll tell us if they think they need one more day to be able to have the most useful, fruitful joint meeting as possible. Okay, so I'll, yeah. Okay.
Either day is good here.
Okay, I will, I'm sorry.
Going back one step to the other issue, the Board of Health is gonna make a formal recommendation as to location of, or COVID status on the town meeting.
Well, they have actually already made a formal recommendation, and we have taken a formal vote to have the meeting outdoors. But actually, the situation of, of renting a tent is a little more flexible than we expected. And so they're going to meet again. I think it's fair to say that they're going to either affirm or change their mind about a recommendation for the site of town meeting, whether it needs to be outdoors or indoors. I'm not sure what they'll, you know, where they'll come down on that. But, which will also mean, if they change something at our next meeting, we'll have to address it as well, because we usually have a joint vote on that. But they're meeting this Thursday. Anything else? Okay, if not, take that last motion?
Oh, that's me. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five, great. We have a motion and a second by Gary. Well, all in favor, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes, unanimous, seven thirty-five. Thanks, folks, and thank you, Tom, and everyone else this evening.
Yes, thank you, Tom. Great work.
Yeah, take care. Good night.
Night, One of.